So let's call to order the regular meeting of the Village of Riverside, Illinois Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, August 22nd, 2018. Director Appley, will you call the roll?
Yes, Chair Bruce Metier.
I am here.
Commissioner Hannity.
Here.
Commissioner Marhol.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Scanlon. We have a quorum?
Thank you. I gave Director Appley some edits for the minutes of Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing minutes for July 25th, 2018. Do we have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
I also did some edits and some information.
And more? Okay, great. Can we get the motion first?
Approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. What were your edits?
It was regarding the placement of the discussion of text amendment when it's associated with granting a variation. I thought that they had all occurred after the public hearing was closed. And then there was one section where it stated that I had said one thing and I only said part of that, and Commissioner Pelletier had said part of that. So I just wanted it clarified, in part because I think it's important, like if someone's going through the video and trying to find a discussion, if it's not consistent with what's written, sometimes I think it could be hard to find.
So could you remind me, what was the part, something that you said part of?
I had asked about the potential for using gooseneck lighting in a flat wall sign versus an internally illuminated sign. And Commissioner Pelletier had asked about the second line. Oh, it's at the top of page two or three, sorry. The bottom of, our discussion was at the bottom of page two or three, and the text amendment discussion is at the top of a page. If you can get that out. But Commissioner Pelletier had asked about whether the customer, petitioner, had thought about removing the second line of text from the signs.
Right.
And Mr. Potts had responded, it wasn't really their practice to do that.
You can make those changes for the minutes that go to the board? Okay? So with any other changes?
It was at the bottom of page two of the minutes. I didn't have any other changes.
Okay. So with those changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we have no one in the audience. Have you received any citizen requests or communications?
I have received a special use application, a text amendment application, for a daycare to be located in the B-1 district. So I am working on reviewing that application. So that should be presumably before you next month. Because the deadline is next week to get things to the paper, so.
And can you provide us with the village board update? Is there anything?
The text amendment for garages and driveways was continued, so they'll be taking that discussion up again at their next meeting, which is September 6th. So we'll see if we have any sort of conclusion on that at that meeting, or if it'll take another couple of meetings to get to. But, so that's, that's in the hopper, and I don't think they have anything else immediately in the hopper. The sign variation didn't get approved. Oh, go ahead.
The update on the rezoning?
Oh, that's right. The rezoning was denied by the village board on Ogden. So that will remain B-1C, and he did find a new realtor, so he does have it back on the market. So it's been on the market for a little bit over a month, I think. I think it went on the market about mid-July. So that's what happened with the Ogden property, because that one was one where they tabled that discussion to allow him some time to do a little bit more market research, and for staff to, the village to be able to reach out to the neighboring property since Loyola acquired McNeil, and see if they had any immediate plans for that office building or not. And they do not have any plans to sell it at this time, so. And I guess the other one would be that the sign variation didn't get approved. However, Mr. Potts was able to reduce the size of that sign by going with the smaller lettering, so the overall square footage did come in under 40 square feet. So no variation was, ended up being needed for the size. So they just got the variation for the location being on the side and the rear. And we did put in some conditions on the illumination hours and illumination levels of the property lines to accommodate for the residential uses that are adjacent to it. So that's the outcome of the sign variation.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, a continued discussion and recommendations to staff on draft text amendments related to stoops, porches, awnings, and canopies. Director Appley?
Since we thoroughly vet things here, we have been at this for several months now, talking about awnings and canopies and roof extensions and porches and stoops. And this all kind of stemmed out of that variation that we received for the porch extension landing over on Gage. So the board had asked that the Planning and Zoning Commission look into trying to clarify some of those items, and what can we do to just make that a little bit clearer? So we've kind of been talking through what other communities do, what kind of encroachments they allow, what kind of definitions do they have for porches or awnings or stoops and things like that. So we've been talking about that for several months now, looking at what the other communities allow. And what we've kind of gotten to was a draft text amendment, a language that was before you at the, well, I guess not the last meeting, but the meeting before that. So, and that one, we came up with an open and/or covered entryway, stoops, landings, or other similar structures serving an entry, being a permitted encroachment in the yards, provided they don't exceed 25 square feet. And the idea was that would give the property owner some flexibility in how to make that fit their, their landing. So rather than having a maximum encroachment, we gave a maximum size. And if somebody wants to just do a five-by-five, they can. If they only want to come out four feet and they want it six feet wide, they can do that. So it allows a little bit of flexibility with that. You guys reviewed that at the last meeting and had some feedback on that. There was some concern that we could have multiple of these at every entry, and so you asked that this be narrowed down to a primary entry. So we add that, added that language in there, that this would be serving a primary entry, and that for those that are encroaching into the street yard, that it would be limited to that 25 square feet in area. And then we used the same encroachment languages we use, have been using for stoops that encroach into the side yard, that they can only encroach that three feet. So.
So as you remarked, how did we get to the 25-square-foot number?
Well, a few numbers got bantered around, and I think 25 seemed to be the one that everybody was like, I feel comfortable with 25 square feet. A standard landing, like a code-compliant landing, is nine square feet. So this would be almost three times the size of the minimum that you have to have as a landing at an exterior door. So that's, I think, how the number was come up with. We can adjust that if we want to, to make it something that's more of a multiple of nine if we want to, to maybe make that, since, you know, we do have a requirement that they have to be at least three feet deep.
Right. And I was just, as I was looking at this, I was wondering how we got there, because you may have some houses that, because of their size, three-by-three could work, and you could have some where a five-by-five may look small, depending on the size of the house, so.
Right. I think most people would tell you that three-by-three is too small, because when you open up that storm door, that covers the whole three-by-three pad, because it's as wide as the door, and the doors are three feet.
And I guess that's my point. I'm wondering if 25 is too small.
Oh, okay.
Because when I think of five-by-five, that doesn't really seem that big to me.
Yeah, remember eight-by-three.
But remember, it's not a porch. It's just an entryway.
Right. So this is, I mean, a porch, we have different rules for.
Right.
And you can have them be a little bit bigger for the sort of like being able to cover your entry and have that entryway area, and without having to get into, is it a porch? Because it has a little bit of an overhang, or, you know, it just allows people that little bit more flexibility for being able to have that comfortable front entry into their home outside of a simple three-by-three pad, especially since our, our street yards are.
Okay, so then how do we determine if somebody says, I'm going to pour something here, and it's more than 25 square feet, but, and we're going to have a covering over the door, so it's really a porch? It's not a stoop. But for all intents and purposes, it's going to look what many people would consider a stoop.
Well, if you're allowed to have an awning over your door, and it can only encroach so many feet, so depending on how they pour that, I mean, you can have those little coverings just over the door, just over a window. That's kind of how the code allows for those encroachments and what they serve. It's when we start getting to things that are, you know, the entire width of the house or half the width of the house, but they're serving the door.
Right.
That we started to get into that clarification. So that's why we wanted to say, okay, you can have a covered entry, and if it's covered, it's great, if it's not covered, but it does have to be open, so you can't start putting walls around it, just to kind of make that clear. But that we wanted it to be able to be covered, but we didn't want it to be something that ends up being the entire width of the house. You know, like a porch might end up being the entire width of your house, but this is meant to be, you know, the impression I got from you guys is you wanted this to be in smaller in scale than what you would think of as a porch. So I think we have to kind of maybe toe that line a little bit of, when are we getting into something that would be a porch if it were covered, so.
Okay.
And as we think through it, I can see how maybe you might want to do something that's a multiple of nine, or a multiple of three, versus, you know, something that's a multiple of five, considering what the code says for like an area. But I don't know how much bigger than 25 square feet we want to go.
Mm-hmm.
Just, I mean, I can maybe see going a little bit bigger, but.
Yeah, my thought was just at 25, when I started thinking about it, however you wanted to do it, didn't seem like that much space.
So like if you were to go, a door is three feet? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
So then does somebody, if they want to go bigger, then they have to somehow qualify it as a porch? And then what, expand the covering over it, or, you know, what's going to be the termination there?
So well, the porch is typically, it's a covered roof-like structure that's over it. It doesn't necessarily have to have the supports, but typically it will. And it's usually the entire thing is covered, not just a portion of it.
And then what about if you have someone who has, and I went back and looked at the porch section today?
Okay.
This is popped up. And was talking about... Where was it? Well, my question is, what if someone has a non-conforming stoop? And they simply want to repair or replace it?
Well, that would fall under our non-conforming structures regulations, and you're allowed to do repair and maintenance of non-conforming structures. So provided they're not going to be expanding it.
Can they do like-for-like?
Can they do like-for-like?
If it's a non-conforming stoop.
If it needs to be repla, yeah, it has to be like-for-like, so.
Yeah.
It would have, if it was a concrete stoop, then they would have to replace it or be fixing it as a concrete stoop. They couldn't suddenly throw on a slightly wider wooden front porch or something.
Okay.
Wouldn't they be able to tear off that non-conforming stoop and install one of these primary entryways, as long as it complied with these dimensions?
With the regulations in there.
Right, they need regulations?
Yeah, they would be able to do that.
But I'm thinking of someone who may have something right now that's bigger than 25 square feet.
Yes, right.
Which is, which would be non-conforming, and then wants to, hey, I need a new stoop, and I want to keep the same size, design, whatever.
Right, you're saying if they have a better situation now, then the new regulations are out of them.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, then I guess they could only repair and replace.
Unless we specifically say, non-conformance can be replaced as they are.
So.
I think we did that for porches, when we were talking about, but we were talking about enclosed porches, couldn't do them, but if they were going to be repaired or replaced.
Right, you could do repairs, but you couldn't change its form, was how it used to be written. So if you wanted to start changing its form, then it had to go through this variance process, because it wasn't just a.
So would that apply to this? If you're just going, if you're not going to change form, if you're non-compliant or non-conforming?
I would confer with the village attorney.
Well, looking at the non-conforming structures section, normal maintenance and incidental repair or replacement and installation or relocation of blah, 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 there's a big list, may be performed on any non-conforming building or structure. No repairs or reconstruction shall be made that would create any new non-conformity, increase the degree of any previously existing non-conformity, or increase the bulk of the building in any way.
Okay.
So that.
So they would be covered, then they would be all right, like-for-like.
Yeah. And that's how, that's how you've interpreted that, correct?
Yeah, in the past, that's, for other things, that's how we've interpreted it, yes.
Okay.
So I think the question is, I like the idea of the multiple of three.
Yeah.
And, you know, 25, I share the question of how did we end up at 25? And we just throw out, if three-by-three is the minimum of what's required under the building code, do we just double that to six-by-six and go to 36 square feet?
That's pretty substantial, though, and how would you want to go to 27 square feet?
And you can mix and match that anyway you want to, as long as you're complying with the building code.
And the maximum encroachment is three feet.
For the side yard.
For the side yard.
For the front, for the street yard, we just left it with the square footage.
Okay.
So that depending on how they wanted to configure their area, they would be accommodated to do that without a restriction on setback.
And does, does the, the square foot area only contemplate the actual?
The landing.
The landing.
And then the stairs would be allowed to encroach as needed to meet the grade and the building code requirements.
Okay.
And it was one of my questions, I wasn't clear if the steps and stoop can be added on to the primary entryway from reading this. But we're, the commission is fine with that happening, so an additional encroachment of, I think it's three feet with the step and, step and stoops, stoop and steps? And if that's the case, I would be even more reluctant to go to a six-by-six or a 36-square-foot size for the primary entryway.
Can you repeat that, Jessica?
Yes. My, one of my questions was whether, if we have the open and/or covered entryway, which is a primary entryway added, if someone can then add on the stoop and steps, or the steps, it's an additional allowed encroachment.
And the addition of the primary entryways in the form of a porch, are you saying?
Or a landing. Director Appley said it was a landing, and then on to, which could be up to whatever, 25 square feet, 27 square feet.
Right.
And then can someone then add on an additional encroachment of the steps going down from that landing?
Right, so Sonia, I think we had talked about that on the phone as we were going through this, and I, I thought we'd agree that, at least as written, that you would have the stoop, and then if code requires you to get to the ground, so the steps would be in addition.
Okay, that makes sense, within the strict limits of the code, basically.
Yes.
That's why the discussion of the riser size and the steps and the staff.
Yes.
So, to your question of how we got to the 25, I'm looking at the minutes of our last meeting, and we discussed that the owner could configure it how they wanted it to be. It could be five-by-five, it could be four-by-six, and just somehow we ended up at 25 square Do we want to recommend larger?
I would agree with Commissioner Miller that not more than 27. I mean, if we're looking at a multiple of three, for whatever reason, wouldn't be in favor of going much more than 27, or any more than 27.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. I just felt 25, I mean, additional two square feet, but it's something, but I just felt 25 was a little, it could be small, I don't know. Visually, I couldn't, kind of without laying down a tape measure and actually doing it, which I should have done, but.
Well, I think part of the consideration is that this is a permitted encroachment, and we don't want to encourage substantial, you know, house entryways that are all allowed encroachments. And some of these street yards are pretty small, so like the case we had in front of us, the street yard is fairly shallow, and this is applying to all the houses throughout the village.
And where I thought you were going to go, and maybe this was implied in your prior question, was do we need to have some sort of minimum street yard that has to be maintained with this encroachment? And I was trying to go through what we have here. It looks like we have minimums in some circumstances, and I don't think that's a concept we have discussed yet.
And I think that's part of the reason to keep it fairly small, so we don't have to go down that road like they did with the unenclosed porch discussion. I'm not sure what the right answer is for that, if we should look into that, having a minimum street yard, unencroached upon a minimum street yard depth or not.
I guess I would kind of maybe lean away from that a little bit. I think for a porch, it felt like it was a more, for like a more finessed word, more imposing presence on the street yard than an entryway. And you do have areas in town, as we were working through that discussion, where you have houses that are as close as 15 feet, 18 feet, you know. In some cases, you might have one that's very pushed up to the corner, and on one side it may have a substantial setback, but on the other side, which is perhaps where the door is, I don't, I can't think of a specific instance where that's the case, but, you know, because of our kind of interesting pie shapes that tend to happen at our, at our corners and our curves, you have those instances where a house is very close to one of those street lot lines, but is pretty far away from another one. And so you have those instances where there's those very small street yards. And if that happens to be one where there is a door, you know, then this is very punitive in that situation, and how they can utilize that or enhance that, that entry, without having to utilize the variance process. So, I think the commission was pretty comfortable saying, at a certain point, you've got to put a hard line on it, and maybe a porch isn't going to work for every instance, and it's important to protect some level of street yard with something as small as this. I don't know, I'm not sure if it's quite as important, maybe it is. And obviously, we'll get preservation feedback on that once we kind of finalize things. And if that's something that maybe they bring up, that they would like to see that, then we can see about incorporating that.
It may.
They're the ones that brought up the, they're the ones that said they kind of wanted to see a hard and fast line on the porches, and so, as well. So I think we had talked about it, we hadn't landed on a number, and they were like, as they talked about it, they kind of came up with 20 feet. So, I think that's how that one kind of evolved into an actual number of a do-not-cross line. So that may happen again, as Preservation Commission gets a hold of this, they might have that recommendation. But I think porches just kind of felt like a bigger presence, and I'm not sure that this has as big of an impact as a porch perhaps would on the street yard.
This is also a requirement to some extent, so if you have, even with the minimum three-by-three, you may end up encroaching more into the yard than we'd like to see.
But in that case, we have the stoops, and it's no more than four feet, or to meet code, and you have to have just that three-by, you know, just enough to meet code. So we have that to fall back on. I think I'd originally kind of taken that out, but Attorney Morris had encouraged me to, since we wanted to focus on a primary entry, then we still need to have some sort of general stoop requirement for other doors that a house may have, so.
So that would be the section below the red line?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Was there a general consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. And then the other one I would call out is that in order to kind of mimic what we did with stoops and steps in the business district, we also addressed that in this entryway section. So they would not be permitted to encroach in the street yard slash front yard in the business districts, but they would allow to have it in the side yard. So that just kind of mimics what we did for steps, already had in the code for steps and stoops. And then the other addition in here was doing the clarifying definitions for awnings and canopies. And what we did was, we had just gone through that exercise with our sign code, so we utilized that definition that we added to our sign code and just placed it here as well. So this is not new language, this is the language that we just recently adopted last year for canopies and awnings. So that should all match. And in reviewing the stoop definition, which you also have on there, I didn't necessarily think that that needed to be changed or clarified any further. I think it's pretty, pretty clear. And then our, our wording in our table is fairly generous for providing an entry in whatever you might kind of want to call it. Is it a, is it a stoop? Is it an entryway? Is it a landing? Kind of giving that flexibility, and that it can be covered. Whereas a stoop itself doesn't necessarily say anything about being covered. The wording in the permitted encroachment allows for that covering.
Okay. I have a couple questions or comments. So stoops are two different types of encroachments. So it's with entryways and landings, without stairs or steps, even though there's going to have to be steps. And then there's also steps and stoops. So is there a risk that somebody could try to play the system and get something more than they should?
Well, the first one is intended for when it's serving a primary entry, and we left it in the second one for all those other entries.
That's why you're the winner. And then continuing on that vein, we're going to keep fighting over whether to include the words in order in definitions and text. You're for, I'm against, there are two in orders in the definitions. I'm not sure if it's going to win that one. That's all I have. Commissioner Marhol?
Observing what you're.
Yeah, I, I see that, and I don't think it's necessary.
That's what I was taught in grad school.
Let's take it out.
Anything else?
So are we ready for hearing this one?
Preservation says so, even if they don't.
Well, I guess my other question would be is, this is something, since it I guess my other question would be, is, this is something, since it was a bit of a board directive, do we want to take it back to the village board and see if they're comfortable with the direction we headed with this, especially since we ended up not moving forward with the impervious surface discussion that had also been a part of this, where we were talking about if we did a net loss, so we can at least give them the update that we discussed all this, vetted all these things. The Planning and Zoning Commission is not in favor of any changes to the impervious surface restrictions or non-conforming impervious surface. However, this is how they'd like to see entryways, stoops addressed. And if they're on board with that, then we can move forward to the public hearing and get it before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Might push it back an extra month, but...
I think that's fine.
Does that seem, does that seem fair?
Okay.
It's a good idea.
Okay. Let me do that.
Next up is new business, discussion and recommendations to staff in the village board on sign code amendments related to wall signs in the B1 zoning district.
Yes. So, pursuant to our discussion on the variance that we received for Amita Health over on Burlington, you and the village board concurred with your recommendation that we address rear wall signs facing the railroads in the B1 district. So we took a look at our regulations, and as I had said at that meeting, currently the B2 district allows for wall signs facing the railroad tracks, but the B1 district doesn't. Also, in doing a little bit of research on the restrictions on illumination in the sign code, we discovered that the illumination restrictions apply only to the B2 district. So there are no restriction on the hours of illumination in the B1 district either. So after some discussion, the village board approved that variation with some conditions on the hours of illumination, and as well as, they also offered up some illumination levels, just so that they can make sure the illumination levels weren't any higher than it previously was in that instance, since there wasn't an illuminated sign in that area. So the petitioner brought that up as well. So, the proposed amendment would revise the restriction for wall signs in the B1 district, where it talks about placement, so that it would mimic the B2 regulations, which talk about street orientation, and states that signs shall be oriented to face the street, off-street parking, or public alley. This addition would allow those businesses that do not have frontage on a street to be able to have a wall sign without a variation. The proposed amendment also states where a property faces a railroad right-of-way, a sign may be provided on the wall facing the railroad right-of-way. The proposed amendment adds illumination restrictions for the B1 district, so any sign adjacent to and directly facing a residentially zoned property may not be illuminated between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. So that is the code amendment you have before you, so some pretty simple changes just to those couple of sections. We'll take any of your comments or feedback, if we're comfortable with it, or we can make some small tweaks to it, we can send it to the village board. Since this is in the building code and not in the zoning code, it doesn't require a public hearing, we can just take action, make a recommendation to the village board, and then the village board can adopt the ordinance with these changes to it, so it can go into effect fairly quickly, in short order, so.
And this is more of a background question. To be able to put up a wall sign, you need to be a tenant in the building, is that correct?
Yes. You couldn't put up a wall sign on a building that you're not?
Well, I mean, the question is, could the building owner put up a wall sign related to a business for a non-tenant?
No. Any signage has to be related to that, those premises.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller, would you like to start us off?
I did have a few specific wording suggestions.
Okay.
On, what is it, provision B, wall signs, two, the one, the provision, I think is the only one that you changed on that. And I, I looked a little bit at the provision for the B2 wall signs, but it's primarily on the last two sentences in that paragraph. So it says, "Where a property is located on a corner lot, signs may be provided on walls facing both streets," would be my suggestion, not on both streets. And then the next sentence, it says, "Where a property faces a railroad right-of-way." And I would think it should be better stated, something like, "Where a property is located adjacent to a railroad right-of-way." Because facing suggests kind of, that's the primary face of the building.
Okay.
And then it says, "Where it faces a railroad right-of-way, a sign may be provided on the wall facing the railroad right-of-way." And I think that actually you could have multiple signs if you have multiple tenants in the building. So maybe it should say, if it's agreeable, "Wall signs may be provided on the wall facing." If that's accurate under the code.
Well, it would be subject to the wall sign...
Subject to the table, right.
...constraints, so...
Yeah, well, the first one is, this has to be, well, I don't know, maybe you'd need to add in a provision of, this has to be consistent with the Table 2 provisions, whatever.
Right, that's number one.
Right about that. Right. That says for sign area and height restrictions, I guess that would cover it, right? Sign location.
But your implication is to say a sign implies that you're only on one side.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, exactly.
I think...
I think there's good changes.
Right, I think that's primarily it. And it, yeah, right. Does it need to also, for the first sentence, it says, well, I'm not sure, should the provision or somewhere else, should it say, "Where a property is located adjacent to a public alley?" I don't know if that's somewhere else in the code. So you can have wall signs on the public alley. Just like, you know, in the last sentence, it says, "Where a property faces a railroad right-of-way." There's no similar sentence where a property faces a public alley, or is adjacent to a public alley.
You don't think the first red sentence covers that?
Well, it says, "All wall signs shall be oriented to face the street, off-street parking area, or public alley."
But it does mention railroad in that area.
Right.
Which is why I added that.
Okay, maybe it's not necessary. Sure, maybe it's not.
But we can shorten it up, so it's all in one sentence, perhaps.
That could be two, right?
I like it in two, because we have a subset, and I think Commissioner Miller's point is well-taken, that it's not simply facing the railroad, but you, the property has to be adjacent to the railroad.
Okay.
So you're not telescoping over a smaller building to try to get railroad signage.
That's a good point.
I think that's all I have. In the area of illumination, under the D that was added, do we want that to say "or" instead of "and"? Any sign adjacent to or directly facing residentially zoned properties?
We had talked about this, Michael. I think we had debated that. Why did we end up saying...
I'm just thinking, along an alley, you might be facing the alley, but be adjacent to a residential property, and perhaps that sign we wouldn't want illuminated outside of those hours.
Right, I think the idea was, we really wanted to protect the, the face, face-to-face contact as opposed to kitty-corner and things like that, thinking that the illumination would not necessarily affect those people. And we applied standards in addition to prevent the spill air too much, right?
For lighting, yes.
We have a, like a zero lot line?
For resident, yeah. If it's adjacent to residential, it's like one foot candle.
We just didn't want to get too overly restrictive. We thought the intent was really just to prevent those people who may be directly facing them.
Okay. So, following up on Commissioner Hannan's comment, where is the requirement that signage be related to a tenant in the building?
Well, there's a general prohibition on off-premises advertising.
I believe it is in the general regulations for signs.
Right, so I don't, I don't get a building and get paid by code to put up a...
Right, right.
It's probably under prohibited. Under prohibited signs, A4, prohibited signs include signs that do not relate to the place of business or office or the use of the property on which it records.
Okay.
On the, on the lighting again, and maybe this is beating a dead horse. Can we simply say, "Any sign facing a residentially zoned property may not be illuminated between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m.?" So we get rid of this discussion of adjacent...
So then, another thing we were...
And this might, you might have been already thinking about this.
Right, so we were talking about, well, what if it is separated by the railroad right-of-way? What if it's separated by a street or alley? We didn't, or, or even if it's a taller building, and then a shorter building, and then a residence. We didn't want that resident to be able to claim, "Well, it's facing me." So, that has to be turned off, even though it's two buildings away. So this was our, you know, kind of, the adjacent to and directly facing was our attempt to limit those circumstances.
So if it's on the back of a building on Burlington, facing a house on Quincy, it would be restricted?
It's not restricted.
Yeah, I thought our intent was for it to be...
That's what I'm thinking, it's not directly adjacent to. You're adjacent to the railroad. So that's kind of...
It's the next adjacent Riverside property. Splitting hairs.
Right, so then we were talking about, well, what if there's vacant lots? What if there is, you know, how far is the separation? So if you wanted to say adjacent to and directly facing, and we're separated only by a street or other open right-of-way, or something like that. I mean, I'm just telling you the conversations we had in reaching this, so whatever the commission decides is fine.
Are you allowed to have the same type of an internally illuminated sign on the front of your business? And if so, then there would be situations where you simply have a public street, like on Quincy, and then a house, the front of a house, right? So that would be an even shorter distance than situations where you have an alley or a railroad in a backyard before it reaches someone's house. So I think maybe we're trying, I don't know if we're being far more restrictive with these rear-facing, rear-wall signs than we would be with a sign on the front of a business.
Well, it would be facing business district.
What would be?
If it's on the front of the business, across the street is also a business district, so this would not apply.
Well, if we look at the same building we've been talking about, the front of that building faces a house.
Because it's in transition.
Yeah, it's in that, right. So, and we haven't, I mean, if we have internally, if we have illumination standards that apply to the signs that would be on the front of the house, or the front of the building, isn't that adequate for whatever's put on the back of the building? That's my question.
So what is the standard for, in the event that we have something on the front of a business and it happens to be residential on the other side of the street? Under the existing code?
Under the existing code, we only have it so that the sign illumination shall be designed, located, shielded, and directed so as to prevent the casting of glare or direct light upon adjacent publicly dedicated roadways and surrounding properties, or distract operators of vehicle or pedestrians in the public right-of-way. That's, that's basically what we have for illumination. So this would apply to, if it's on the front of the building, the rear of the building, the side of the building, these new, this new statement here applies to a sign regardless of what side of the building it's placed on.
And you're right, in the transition district, it could be across from a house.
So the hours would apply to, say, the State Farm sign, if it's illuminated on the front of that building, because it has residential across the street. So they would not be able to have it illuminated between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m.
And I'd be in favor of that. I mean, I think, given the nature of the district we're talking about, there's really no need to keep anything illuminated past 10 o'clock, given the nature of where that is with residential streets and not within the core business district.
The other place you have it in the B1 district is sporadically up and down Harlem as well.
Is anybody else in favor of trying to develop language such that a sign on the back of a business on Burlington would need to turn off at night to protect a house across the railroad on Quincy?
Yes.
So three versus four, okay?
Okay, so we want that. To make some, an exception for over a railroad track or alley, or just railroad track.
So you do want that?
I do, yeah. Several of us do. Or include public and private alley? Not that there are going to be many signs in those private alleys, probably, or can't be.
Probably not, but once you've opened up the opportunity to have them, they can appear.
Well, this only allows it if it faces a public alley, and we're, we're saying that's the only instance it would be allowed. Most of those buildings along Harlem, that's a private access drive to, to get to the back for servicing, loading, and employee parking, it's not a public, it's not a public alley, it's not something that the village owns or maintains.
So if it said, "Any sign adjacent to," and then we add, comma, "or separated by a street, public alley, or railroad right-of-way, comma, and directly facing a residentially zoned property may not be illuminated between the hours of 10:00 and 8:00."
I think that would cover it.
Yeah.
Okay. So staying on illumination, wouldn't reader boards being prohibited become E rather than F?
Yes, it would.
And then going on to B, wall signs. For the first sentence, should we say, "Oriented to face a public street?" Because we had public street in the original sentence. Not sure it makes much of a difference in Riverside, but it was there originally. And then for signs that face the railroad right-of-way in the B2, there were provisions that it can be on the second story, there are other signs have to be conforming, their trash dumpster has to be screened. Do we want to apply those same conditions? Do we want to apply those same conditions?
In the B2 instance, the rear wall signs were considered additional signs, so that was in addition to the primary and secondary signage that they were allowed. In this instance, you kind of have an allotment of signage, and you can kind of divvy it up how you want to. So I didn't necessarily think that we had to do that in this one, because we weren't giving it as an additional sign. We were just saying, this is another place that you could put the sign besides only on this one wall.
So in the B2, they're extra signs because CMAP was advocating for that?
Yes.
I did not know that. Okay. That is all I have. So, the dentists had a variation to get a second sign facing Long Common, correct? Going forward, if they needed it, they wouldn't have had to go through the variation process?
Well, they had it because it was also larger than what they were allowed as well. So there was a couple of variations for them. It was on a corner, but it wasn't their unit's corner. It was the restaurant's corner, plus it was the same size as their sign over their front door. And so they were basically doubling what they were allotted, so there was also the size variation for that one as well.
I think this is a good change.
I just noticed something regarding wall signs that seems inconsistent, and it has nothing to do with this particular conversation, but let me just mention it in case I'm correct. So in 433 definitions, it defines wall sign as a sign painted upon or attached to and supported by the outside surface of a wall of a building. But then if we look at wall signs for the B1 zoning district, it says wall signs may not be painted onto a wall surface. So is it considered consistent or inconsistent?
That's why we need to go through...
Despite the definition of wall sign, that might not be painted? I don't know. It's not a big deal, but...
That's why we need to go through the whole B1 sign code.
Okay.
That's a good catch.
Sonya, do you have any insight into why wall signs may not be painted onto a wall surface?
In most towns, that is frowned upon.
Okay, so they start to peel.
Is it, they peel, and then, is it graffiti? Yeah, so...
Okay.
Start getting into some of those discussions, wow.
Fair enough.
Are you aware of any painted?
The only ones I can think of would be, is it the back of Metalmites?
Where?
Metalmites, they kind of have a mural. And it does say Metalmites on there.
Yeah, but the mural was done more as an artistic endeavor by the Arts Center, I think.
I was going to say, is it graffiti or is it art?
So, yeah, that's not really sign, it's more of a art piece, but that would be the closest I can think of one that we have that's painted in town, so.
Any final comments on wall signs?
So are we ready to recommend this one to the village board with the changes that we discussed? With Michael's changes for the railroad, that was fine.
And Jacqueline had some excellent points for just the wall signs for number two. Those were good recommendations.
Yes, those are good, we wrote them all down.
I've got those written down.
Do you need a vote on this?
I think that would be good.
Yes.
Make it formal.
All colored voice.
It's too long. No.
All right.
Can we get a formal motion?
A motion to accept the changes that we have discussed regarding signage in the B1 district.
Second? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Haney?
Yes.
Commissioner Markle?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Philatier?
Yes.
Chief Person Mateo?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was fast work, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Have we already covered any information for us? The daycare?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Next on our agenda is information. You already told us about a possible daycare.
Oh, yes, we have the possible daycare, and then we may have...
Wireless?
Small cell wireless?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I think we have to do some small updates to the zoning code to incorporate some new state statutory language related to small cells, small wireless cell facilities. So, that will require a public hearing as well, so that should be on the next agenda as well.
So our next meeting is September 26th? Anybody know in advance that they cannot attend? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Under an hour, it wasn't quite 20 minutes.